Commissioner Crackman is absent. Commissioner Greg Young is absent. Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones is absent. Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake appears to be absent. And Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cawthorn.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay, you have eight of 12 members present, and that does constitute a quorum.
Thank you. We will officially call it to order at 3:32 PM.
Okay, that brings us to agenda additions, where the only item I am aware of as a potential agenda addition today is the addition of a special resolution of remembrance for Coach Terrence Nguyen.
Okay. At this time, I would like to, I have a motion in a second, but at this time, I would like to open it for a public hearing if there's anyone here to speak in favor or against adding this potential agenda addition, a special resolution of remembrance for Coach Terrence Nguyen, to please come forward now. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Have a motion from Commissioner Parliamentarian Victor Thomas, and it was seconded by Commissioner John Paul Young. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that my colleagues please support me in adding this special resolution, resolution of remembrance for Coach Terrence Nguyen. As you know, on Monday, we did lose him. The Booker T. Washington family is in mourning regarding his loss. We stand with not only the Booker T. Washington family, but also his immediate family. As you know, Coach Nguyen has served over 30 years at the Booker T. Washington High School as the girls' basketball coach and the special teams coach for the football team. And it's a devastating loss, and we want to make sure that his service and his contributions are recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for adding this to the agenda. Okay, please vote. Remember, this must pass unanimously to be added to our agenda.
And Commissioner Epperson, it didn't log your vote. Okay, and that motion carries with, with eight in support, none in opposition, and four absent. And for the record, also Commissioner Crackman has joined us now.
Thank you. And before we move to the next item, I know I would like to recognize one of our elected officials of Caddo Parish who is here, our tax assessor, Ms. Regina Webb is here. And I know that we'll hear from you later on. Just wanted to acknowledge your presence. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us, that item, by the way, will be added as 8.6 on your agenda. And that brings us now to citizens' comments, where citizens who wish to address the commission on any issue other than zoning are asked to fill out a comment card located in the chamber foyer or to my left in the box here, and submit those to the box. Comments are limited to three minutes, and at this point, I'm not aware that we have received any requests.
I don't have any either, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, then, thank you very much. We'll move forward to visitors, where we do have a special visit today. On the agenda today, 6.1 is a visit from our Caddo Parish tax assessor, Dr. Regina Webb. She is here to do her annual presentation of information related to the Tax Board of Review Appeals Hearing, scheduled on September 12 at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Dr. Webb, welcome.
Thank you.
And the floor is yours.
All right. To the Honorable Stormy Gage Watts, President of Caddo Parish, and the Honorable Ken Epperson Senior, Vice President of Caddo Parish, and the Honorable Caddo Parish Commissioners. I present today the official Board of Review memo. As Assessor in and for the Parish of Caddo, this is to certify that the assessments on property located in and are accessible in Caddo Parish has been listed and assessed in accordance with Title 47, Section 1992. It is further certified that the said assessments have been exposed for public review for calendar 15 days, beginning August 15, 2025, and ending August 29, 2025. Said certification of the above is hereby given to the Board of Review as required by Title 47, Section 1992. Thus done and officially signed on this fourth day of September 2025. It is signed by me, Regina Webb. And I note, two signed originals given to the Board of Review, one copy for their files, one copy to forward to Louisiana Tax Commission. So I have those two to give to you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Our open book dates, from August 15, 2025, through August 29, 2025, is only 11 business days. But September 2nd through September 5th are four additional days. We have to work out any disciplinary or values with the citizens of Caddo Parish, which brings us to the total of 15 days that is required. Number of appeals, business, personal property, and real estate. My office has received five appeals in business, personal property. Of all five have been withdrawn. The oil and gas companies have asked for over 75% of obsolete, and we helped them with 30%. They all agreed and have withdrawn their appeals. First, business, personal property has two different accounts pending regarding whether computer software is taxable. One is Terrence USA, and the other is Spine Institute of Louisiana LLC. I have referred this question over to the Louisiana Assessors Association lawyer, Brian Etting, for his advice. Once his advice is received, I will relay that information to those two tax reps for those companies. Lastly, the real estate currently has three pending appeals. The first pending appeal regarding commercial value of the townhomes owned by Area Shreveport One. The assessor's estimate is $5,443,120. Their estimate is $4,474.65. We're still in negotiation on the first one. The second one, pending appeal regarding land values owned by Shreveport GL LLC, the Louisiana Tower Shreveport LLC owns office buildings and parking garage. Currently, the Shreveport GL LLC have not submitted corrected information, and they only own the land part of it, only the land. The second part of it, the representative has not been authorized to provide the required data. The Louisiana Tower Shreveport LLC has not submitted anything. So on the building part and parking garage, we have not received any information. So that's why that information is pending. Third, the pending appeal regarding land and building values is Silly Greenwood Road LLC, and that is formerly known as Libby Glass. We are currently waiting for additional information on that. So negotiation was happening, and then all of a sudden, hadn't heard anything on them. This concludes certification of our land for the Caddo Parish. So now I ask any questions.
Thank you, Madam Tax Assessor, for the update. The board is open if there are any commissioners who has any questions or concerns for the tax assessor. Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. And just another reminder while we're on the subject that September 12 date is following your budget retreat meeting, and will be at 1:00 PM. That brings us now to adopting regular session minutes. 7.1 is to adopt the minutes from the August 21, 2025 regular session meeting.
Thank you. It's being moved by Commissioner Ron Cawthorn, seconded by Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Cawthorn, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President, but no.
Okay. Parliamentarian Thomas?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner John Atkins. Okay. All right, please vote.
And Commissioner Epperson, I'm sorry, thank you very much. That motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent, and brings us on to special resolutions, where we do have six special resolutions to be considered today. The first, 8.1, is a special resolution recognizing Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and Veterans Suicide Prevention Awareness Day.
Okay, I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Ron Cawthorn. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to englobo and adopt with the presentate, special resolutions, 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.6, with the presentation of 8.5 to happen today.
Seconded by the Chair. Would you like to speak on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cawthorn?
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing I would like to share concerning the special resolutions is that 8.1, on September 16 at Southern Hills Recreation Center, there will be a static display there. And I, the reason I put this one on is because approximately 18.5 service members, both active and retired, are completed some form, committed suicide on a daily basis. And the thing is, again, we must get ahead of this and do everything that we can to slow this down, because again, when we think about 18.1, 18.5, individuals on a daily basis, daily, not weekly, daily basis are taking their lives. We must do something, not only to recognize it, but do everything that we can to prevent this from happening as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cawthorn. Parliamentarian Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Commissioner Cawthorn for placing this on our agenda. I have noticed, I'm probably the most active on social media of all of my colleagues, but I have noticed in recent days, there's been an uptick on suicide posts happening on social media on Facebook. It's been a very hot topic over the past three days, where people make a post where, for instance, it says Victor's checking out later on, and it leads to ambiguity as to whether or not I have committed to act of suicide or not. But what I think it does is it shows a cry for help for many people that are in crisis. I really appreciate you putting this on there, because suicide is something that we should be aware of. We should be aware of the signs that our friends and our colleagues and loved ones present, who may be contemplating suicide. And I'd like to ask also, Madam Administrator, if you could work with our Communications Department to try to get some information on the hotline numbers and other resources for those that are contemplating. And thank you once again, Commissioner Cawthorn. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent.
At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand for a special resolution recognizing Chef Haley.
And for those who would like to present the resolution, I have a framed copy here. I will begin to make, to read that as Chef Haley makes her way forward. This is a special resolution recognizing Chef Dionaca Pumpkin Haley. And it reads, whereas the Caddo Parish Commission is always proud to honor and recognize citizens of Caddo Parish who bring distinction and positive recognition to our community through their talents, perseverance, and accomplishments. Chef Dionaca, Chef Pumpkin Haley, a Shreveport native, is proud owner of Cuisine Queens Catering and the Snack Shack, and also serves as chef at Abbey Singers Bistro under the leadership of Executive Chef Nima de Grazia. Whereas Chef Pumpkin has been passionate about cooking since childhood, first learning in the kitchen alongside her mother and grandmother, where she discovered the power of food to bring people together, and the joy of experimenting with flavor and texture. And whereas although she does not hold a formal culinary degree, Chef Pumpkin embodies the truth that success in the kitchen is grounded in energy, work ethic, passion, practice, and mentorship, qualities she has embraced on her journey as a self-taught chef. And whereas she sold her first plate in 2015, and officially launched Cuisine Queens Catering in 2019, later expanding her ventures with the Snack Shack, serving her well-known Royal Snow Cones and other creative dishes. And whereas Chef Pumpkin competed on the August 26, 2025 episode of Food Network's hit competition series, Chef Grudge Match, hosted by Leila Ali, where she faced her boss and mentor, Executive Chief Nima de Grazia, in a spirited battle that showcased not only her bold culinary creativity, but also the respect and deep bond between the two chefs. And whereas Chef Pumpkin's passion, grit, and innovation led her to victory on national television, bringing pride and recognition to Shreveport, and highlighting the extraordinary talent within Caddo Parish's culinary scene. And whereas her journey from home kitchens to national acclaim inspires others to pursue their dreams with determination, reminding aspiring chefs and dreamers alike to keep trying, you'll eventually get it right. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby recognize and commend Chef Pumpkin Haley for her outstanding achievements on Chef Grudge Match, and for her entrepreneurial spirit, and for representing Caddo Parish with distinction on the national stage. Be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the official minutes of the Caddo Parish Commission, and that a copy be presented to Chef Haley as a lasting tribute to her success, creativity, and dedication to her craft.
All right, Ms. Haley, how are you doing today?
I'm okay. I'm blessed.
All right, how's it feel after that fight you just had?
I can breathe.
Yes, indeed.
I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I want to first open the floor for you to be able to say a few words, and I'm sure we'll have some, some kind things to say to you. Go ahead.
Can I get Nima?
Ms. Chef Nima de Grazia, come on up here.
I know it. I know it. Come on. Hi, Nima. I love you. It wouldn't have been possible without Nima, so it's only right that I recognize Nima. Thank you for the opportunity, even though I said no. You pushed me to do this. Y'all, this brung me out of a comfort zone. I was at the end of my road, so I was really ready to stop cooking. I didn't want to do it no more. Grief had then took over, so I was just done with it. But she was like, no, I don't want nobody else to do this with me. There's nobody else that I would have standing beside me besides her husband. He couldn't do it, because they had a couple already. So I thank you for this. You really, you put the spark back in me.
I'm happy.
I want to cook again. I want to beat her again, y'all.
That's what I wanted, for her to cook again, because she's really great.
Yep. And to my family, I couldn't have done this without y'all either. Y'all put up with me. Y'all are there when nobody else is there. Like, I thank y'all. My little cousin Leon, he told me something when I first decided that I wanted to cater. I was skeptical about it. Leon said, jump, build your wings on your way down. And I honestly can say, I've built my wings on my way down, and I'm thankful for this journey, y'all, and thank y'all for recognizing me today.
You're welcome. How about we get your family to stand?
Yes, please.
Yes, indeed.
Family, I love y'all. Thank y'all so, so much. I couldn't do it without y'all. Keep trying, we'll eventually get it right one day.
And Pumpkin have been trying, and there's no other way for me to do it or choose anyone in the city, because I see her, and I believe you all see her too, and which is why we all booked her. When she throw those pans and she makes the best seafood, and she showed it, you know? I told her, be true to your culture, be true to yourself, and do what you can when you're on that stage and represent your family. So I know you're shy, you don't want to say too much, but you are a great chef.
Absolutely.
You are.
Absolutely.
And I'm so proud of you.
Thank you, lady. Thank you. Thank y'all again.
You are so welcome, and it is such a blessing to be able to honor you on this level. Your family may be seated if you wish to. I, I happen to know a little bit of your story, and most people who probably are watching knows also, but I'm always amazed at how God can turn a tragedy into a triumph.
That's right.
And sometimes we have to literally get it out of the mud. But God gave you that gift, and He was not going to let anything stop it. So though it may seem like a coincidence that Chef Nima came to you with this idea, I know that it was a divine appointment. I've been following you for quite some time. Before we actually met in person, I had already been following you as a friend on Instagram. So I'm so proud of you being young and being a valuable part of the citizens here in Shreveport and Caddo Parish. I could not say thank you for choosing to stay here, because you are a part of what's making Caddo Parish be the destination location. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are so welcome. I have a few commissioners who are also on the board to speak. Parliamentarian Thomas?
Yes, I just wanted to say again also, congratulations. You are a representation of what the citizens in Caddo Parish can do. For y'all to be on a national level makes my heart really, really proud to see our people put Shreveport and Caddo Parish on the map. We're already on the map for a lot of different things, but to see us on the map for positive things is really, really positive. Not only that, this is a perfect example of people working together. As you know, we just recognized Chef Nima about a month or ago when she beat Bobby Flay. And what I love about this situation is you reached back. You could have chosen anybody else, but you reached back, and you brought someone who you know deserved the opportunity, who has a quality in her product, a quality that we have recognized for many, many years. The city knows about you. The city is ten toes down for you, and now the country is. And I can't wait to see y'all take over the world. I know this isn't it for you. You stay ready, so you don't have to get ready. And I'm glad that you were ready. And as you can see, what you thought, the funniest thing I've learned is that you can have your own plans, but God has a way of yanking you back into it, and throwing you back in that fight. And I'm so glad you decided to pick it up and fight, and I'm so glad you took that knife from Nima, and I'm so glad you guys won that prize money. But not only that, it was a big win for our community, and we're very proud of you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Ron Cawthorn?
Thank you, Madam President. Chef Haley, I would just kind of like you to share a short version of this process and what actually happened, because again, you're standing here and people are looking at you on YouTube or whatever the case might be, and they don't, in some cases, don't have an idea of what you actually went through to get to this point right here. So if you can, kind of give them the short version of, you know, where you competed, how the process went, and yes, please.
The initial process began when they actually reached out to Nima. And Nima wanted to go against her husband, but it wasn't an option. They was looking for more of a frenemy battle type thing. So that's when she came into play and told me, like, this is you, this is where we argue and bicker the most is in the kitchen, because I like to use a lot of butter. Nima's, she sticks to her roots. She don't want to use nothing more than, she don't want to use no air fryer, no food processors, none of that. So that's where me and her had, as we call it, beef. That's where our beef was, because I feel like you is wasting a lot of time in there chopping them peppers by your hand, when we got food processors to get the job done quickly. So. Yes. But oh, she is going to stick to her roots, so that's it. We actually flew out that morning, let me tell you something, I was so nervous, I missed my flight. No, I ain't even tell my family I missed my flight. I missed the first flight. She calmed down, we gonna be all right. We both get there. I'm set, we both are nervous. I'm started asking her, Nima, why are you nervous? You done done this before. I'm the newbie, why are you nervous? And she was like, each time, it's a different setting, you gonna get nervous. Leila Ali reminded me of somebody from home, a lady named D. Miles. So I told her, I said, I feel like I got somebody from home here with me. Now I feel comfortable. And she say, the noise talking you and Nima been doing? She was like, both of y'all can handle this. Good luck. After that, I relaxed and took the knife and rested.
Took the knife away.
Took the knife.
Thank you very much for that synopsis of this process. And again, congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate you too, Chef Haley. I hadn't heard that name early, but I'm sure we're going to be hearing a lot from you. Chef Nima, I am familiar with, I've eaten too much of her food already. And I must admit that, you know, I had to stop looking at these cooking shows, because I always gain weight every time I, you know, finish looking at them. So I got to figure that out. You're going to have to help me figure that out.
I got you. I know how to make it healthy.
But I really, really appreciate you winning that competition, and like I said, we're looking for bigger and better things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Chef Haley, I want to share something with you also that I heard one of our great presidents, President, former President Bill Clinton say, that each time you get up to speak, if you're not nervous, then you're not good anymore. So that, that applies to the same work that you're doing. If you're not nervous, if you don't feel those butterflies, then you're not good anymore. So keep doing the great work, keep being nervous and doing it anyway. Congratulations.
Thanks again.
You are more than welcome. Commissioner John Paul Young, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. So congratulations, Chef Haley. Nima's a fantastic chef, so I'm impressed that you could beat her at, you know, cooking anything. But could you tell, could you tell the people here and any, any people who are watching online where your, where your business is, so that we could try it out?
Okay, for my catering company, you can do your bookings online, it's at www.cuisinequeencatering.com. I also have a snow cone stand, it's located at 3746 Hollywood Avenue. It's seasonal, so you can catch me there during summer, spring, fall, I'm not too much there.
That's in District 7.
Yeah, so fall is when my books are wide open for catering, fall and winter, until the summer comes back around.
Terrific. And are you also still working at Abbey Singers?
Tuesday to Thursday.
Great. Well, I look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
You're welcome. Be on the lookout, we got something coming together in November, so.
All right. Well, I hope you keep us updated. Thank you.
Exciting. And before you all leave, I just want to take this moment to say a very happy birthday to our own Parliamentarian Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Happy birthday, Victor. You come to Abbey Singers, the treat is on me this week.
Oh, I'll definitely be there.
Thank you and congratulations. Alright, Mr. Clark.
Okay, that brings us to Communicating Committee reports. Uh, where the first item is the administration's response to information request from commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We enjoyed the kickoff classic this past weekend and um, was asked to give some results of that classic. And the information, it's not official, but the information that we've gotten so far is that there were over 18,000 fans in attendance. Hotels were sold out, air travel was consistent. And many businesses had nothing but good things to say about the activity that we had that weekend. And so it was a great time for all and our communications team did put together a short video that will play now so you can see highlights from the game.
Love it. Great job.
That concludes the administration report. We'll take any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. CEO. We have Commissioner John Eckens.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Ms. Fraser, can you help me to understand what's going on with this voice vote issue? I mean, are we gonna, are all about the votes that we've taken over the last 10 years gonna be null and void?
That was crazy.
Um, Commissioner, it has been presented as an item for litigation. I know that there is an Attorney General's opinion going back to the 1980s that says electronic voting, particularly like the system we have where everybody's vote is recorded and people are able to see would meet the requirements of that. It will depend on what the judge rules, but I think I can confidently say if, um, if electronic voting is an issue, it's an issue from everyone from the legislature down to us. I was a Senate page back in the 80s. Um, and I know they've been voting electronically since then, so we've got a lot of invalid laws on the books if that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Eckens. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Director Samuel, uh, if he's in, in the room to come up and tell us a little bit about the, uh, the facts and the progress of the case of the stray dogs at The View that was in The View Apartments that were in the news recently.
Oh, yes, sir. Um, good evening Commissioners and Administration. So Department Animal Services and Mosquito Control's core business continues to be public health and public safety. So we did respond to a call on 1846 Fairfield Avenue, which is The View Tower Apartments. We went out there on the second.
Is that Labor Day?
Yes.
Yes, so you went on Labor Day. Okay, great.
Yes, sir. The second and we also went out on the third. No animals were observed running at large. And then I personally went by there today, this morning, maybe around 10 o'clock. I talked to the apartment manager, which is Mrs. Cash. And she informed me that the dogs were friendly, which animals being friendly and at large has nothing to do with public threat and public safety. But one of the German Shepherds are inside of a tenant's apartment. So we are trying to find that particular animal and the other two are either back where they belong or still at large. That we did not spot them. We would never make a call to say we're not responding until someone gets bitten. Matter of fact, we went out Sunday. I personally went there myself with Councilman Talaferro. We removed two dogs from St. Paul's Church. You know, with the tranquilizer guns, we decreased the threat. We neutralized the threat very quickly and very fast. So that's where we at now. Matter of fact, tomorrow or tonight, we'll go back by the apartments, continue to make runs by the apartments to make sure we don't see any threats. And then we'll just go from there.
Okay, terrific. So um, do you have, do you have any message that you want to share with the public beyond that?
Yes, sir. The rabies virus is a serious deadly zoonotic disease and our department treat that very, very, very carefully.
Terrific.
And that's the message I want everybody to get. So when you make a phone call, we will respond.
Great. And just, uh, just to remind the public and the commissioners, you find that the tranquilizer guns are working well at humanely stopping animals so that you don't have to run after them in person?
Absolutely. The days of chasing a fearful aggressive dog with a catch pole and running up on it, possibly injuring the employee. The Xylazine and Ketamine and the Trank gun is very effective. And it has been utilized much and it's appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Assistant Director Samuel. And I want to thank also my colleagues, especially those who were here to vote in favor of tranquilizer guns because they make this job much more possible. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great point. Thank you, Commissioner Young. Vice President Everson.
Ms. Bryant, uh, if there is a, let's see, Commissioner Carthon, what you call it, the AAR, After Action Review? Relative to the Shreveport Classic, uh, in the official, yeah, I would like to be on it.
Yes, sir.
Because I remember when we had the Red River Classic and we had crowds of 30, 35,000 consistently. And like to be with them, see what we can do to enhance for next year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ron Carthon. Okay, you waved. Alright. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Administrator, we had talked earlier about getting an update on broadband. Have we talked to anyone about coming and let us know where we are in the parish, outside the city as well as inside the city?
Uh, yes, sir. We are just trying to arrange a, a date that they can come out. We have, uh, reaching out to both AT&amp;T and Comcast about whether or not they can present. It's my understanding that AT&amp;T has some activity inside city limits and Comcast has, uh, some activity outside of city limits. So we'll, um, make sure we arrange that date for, if not the next commission meeting, the one after that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Back with the dogs and the tranquilizer gun, Mr. Sam. I know that, I know that, uh, when we were fighting to get the guns, there was some controversy about whether or not, uh, we would use them because if you shoot them, then they'll run out of the house and some issues like that. We're not concerned about that anymore.
No, sir. I mean, even if you're, um, out and you see a dangerous animal and you're chasing it with a catch pole, they can still cause great damage to someone's property. But Xylazine and Ketamine is called Capture All. So you give it about, about three minutes before the animal is down, but we also assess the situation. If there is any, uh, any citizens around, we make sure everybody is safe and really not around before we deploy. Um, and if we're in other public situations where there's a large amount of people and the threat is still serious, we call SPD. So we, we have a fact sheet and a policy that we operate off of to make sure everybody is safe. And make sure everybody's property is good.
Well, I know the issue that we had about the dogs running out in the house once you shoot them. You're saying you assess the situation so that
Yes, sir.
There would not necessarily be a possibility for them to go under there.
Yes, sir. They could run under the house just by pulling up, but you also got to make sure your backdrop is clear. So all of that stuff, you, you make sure you have enough officers, you have a spotter, you have a marksman and you also have a animal spotter. So all of that is in place before you even attempt to deploy. So we exercise caution and safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Ms. Bryant, I do know that there is a post legislative session happening tonight at the Louisiana State Zebbit Museum. Um, I plan to ask this question there as well, but I want to know, can you please keep us abreast and informed? I know that there was a clean water task force created in this most recent session. Um, I'm very interested in that for Cattle Parish. If there's any way that you can try to, um, you know, open up dialogue about where the status is of that, um, so we can get information for that for the citizens of Cattle Parish, so we can try to do whatever we need to do to make sure that we have clean and safe drinking water here in Cattle Parish.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Ron Carthon, are you on the board?
I apologize, Madam.
No worries. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge that Southern Hill Recreation Center on the September 6th will be having a block by block meeting to disseminate throughout the Southern Hill area for cleanliness with the city of Shreveport. I plan on being there not very long because I too am celebrating an anniversary, I call it, not a birthday, but an anniversary. And so I'll be there for a very short time. But this Saturday, I think it starts at 8 o'clock and we're just asking our volunteers to be at the Southern Hill Recreation Center to receive their assignments and, uh, the other hard work that they will receive to assist in the cleaning of the area. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Just one final, one final note, Madam Chair, uh, that crossed my mind. It was about, uh, the Governor's Initiative. Madam Administrator, are you familiar with Governor's Initiative about bringing, uh, the National Guard into Cattle Parish slash Shreveport? Do you have any update on that or whether or not, uh, there are people that are concerned that's talking about it now? And, uh, I wanted to give them some information if possible.
I don't have any additional information other than what, uh, we all have heard through the news media. Um, but we can reach out to see, uh, what additional information we can get about that.
Is there a timeline?
That, to get that back to you?
Oh, is there a timeline for possibility of them initiating something of that nature?
I don't have the timeline. I'll have to reach out to see if we can get that type of information.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Second time around. Second time around, Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you again, Madam President. I apologize. I didn't know we were in Communicates now. Um, but I do also want to make an announcement. Um, Madam President and I just recently left from Art Space Downtown making an amazing announcement. I want to announce and congratulate the Shrek on their hard work that they've done, working with the Downtown Development Authority for their application to a Levit grant. Um, what this grant will do if awarded to Shreveport, um, as you know, Cattle Parish did support Cattle Common Park. Cattle Common Park is a shining example of how public and private investments, partnerships can come together to make a vibrant and inclusive space for our community. Throughout its inception, they have been doing many different concerts for the public free of charge. Um, so I really want to applaud them for what they've done. Um, with them being awarded this grant, it will increase that. Um, what's going to happen is we're gonna need all the citizens of Shreveport, Cattle Parish, the surrounding area to please support and please join them, um, in this effort to win this grant. Um, they were selected over, um, out of 100 cities. And let me go ahead and read, read this here for you. Cities all around the nation have submitted applications to the Levit Music Foundation for funding to produce live music events. Of over 300 applicants, Shreveport has been selected as one of 100 cities to possibly receive $120,000 in funding to produce 30 free live professional music concerts over the next three years at Cattle Common Park. This is a huge opportunity for our region, but to progress in the selection process, we must demonstrate community support. That's the second level of the grant. Um, the community sort is gonna be, support is gonna be based on the number of votes received for our region. I didn't say the city of Shreveport. I didn't say District Three. I said our region. Which means that we're gonna need Shreveport, Bowser, um, all over Cattle Parish, Keyfield, Greenwood, everyone pitching in. Because these are gonna be professional music artists, actual professional artists. Not only professional music artists, but professional local music artists that are gonna have a platform to perform. The online public voting opens on September the 5th, tomorrow at 12 o'clock noon. It ends September the 15th at 7 o'clock PM. So we only have 10 days to bring this home and get those votes that we need for our region. Based on the number of votes, 50 finalists will be selected through the online and text the vote public voting phase. The Levit, the Levit Foundation will then review the top proposals to select the grant recipients, which will then be announced on November the 18th, 2025. As you know, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, we have a rich, rich history, um, that lies in our music, um, and our cultural experiences that we have. We have so many people, um, that have provided so much to the music community. Uh, Mr. Lead Belly, um, as you know, um, has an entire neighborhood named after him in the bottoms of, um, Shreveport, Louisiana. Everything from our Louisiana Hay Ride. Um, we deserve this. We are prepared for this. We have the talent for this. And with you all's support, we will be able to win this grant and bring this home. Um, and, um, I'm gonna ask Madam President to join me in what we stated earlier. We need you all to do what? We need you to
Vote.
Share. And help Shreveport win. Because we're what, ma'am?
We are Cattle Parish, the destination location.
That's right. So I hope that you all will join in, um, signing up to, um, it's really, really simple. Um, I did provide a press kit to Ms. Bryant so that our communications department can disseminate that across our social media. Um, literally, once you scan the QR code, it automatically brings it up. You don't have to go through a bunch of different pages. You can also text, um, you can also text, hold on.
Shreveport.
Shreveport to And all you had to do is text Shreveport and it's gonna automatically vote for Shreveport. Once again, that telephone number is 877-409-5525. And just text the word Shreveport. That opens up tomorrow at 12 o'clock noon. I'm not, I'm not only asking you to vote, but get someone else to vote. Your social circles, your family, your church community. Uh, this is an all hands on deck opportunity for us to bring this home to our community. Thank you to our Parks and Recreation Department, um, that's always supporting Cattle Common Park. Once again, they have been doing some really beautiful concert series there and I'm really proud to see how this is going to help elevate that experience and elevate the, um, the experience that our citizens have here in Cattle Common Park. Um, once again, this is another example of public-private partnerships, working together to make this a better community and the destination location for, um, for the country. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Seeing no other commissioners on the board, I'm sorry, Vice President Everson.
Thank you, Madam President. In reference to, uh, the old saying, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. I don't think that's true. We've just had a wonderful inaugural Shreveport Classic. I don't think there were any major safety incidents that occurred there. We're getting ready for the state fair of Louisiana, which we are building up on. We've increased security exponentially. More cameras, more police enforcement, things of that nature. We're trying to get these places. And let's remember, the Independence Bowl is around the corner. And I've had friends that called me that heard Shreveport has been mentioned as a place that's running rampant with crime. So I think we need to make sure that some of our politicians, our elected officials and things that people say, these things can hurt us. They can hurt us if they aren't factual. So let's remember, the Independence Bowl is around the corner. We are vying for the grant at Cattle Common. We're looking to increase tourism. We're looking to bring more citizens here. We got the deal on the table about pickleball as far as bringing economic development. But all of these negative connotations that's being thrown around out here by certain people in the political as well as the regular arena, it can hurt us. Let's make sure that we are putting facts out. Irregardless if you have a district attorney that's a Democrat, you have a sheriff, whomever the majority of your elected leaders are. This is the United States of America. We all want safety. We all concerned about good law enforcement. But let's make sure that we put facts out. Because the basic, the bottom line is, we want Cattle Parish and the surrounding area to prosper and grow. So let's make sure that the people that we hear talking about negative connotations and things, let's make sure that they are factual. Let's make sure that they know that the things that they say can hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. Seeing no other commissioners on the Seeing no other commissioners on the board, next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to the President's report.
Thank you. Most of the items that I had for my report have already been spoken, and I agree with all of those sentiments, everything that has been said about the community events and the impacts that we are making economically throughout Cattle Parish. I do have a quick announcement that the Moretown Community Meeting will be held in about 30 minutes at the Moretown, I'm sorry, at Morning Star Baptist Church Event Center beginning at 5:00 PM. And on next Saturday, September 13th, the Block-by-Block Cleanup will also be held in Moretown. The Sickle Cell Bike Ride will be held Sunday, September 14th at Airport Park in the Shreveport Regional Airport meeting spaces. It begins at 6:30 PM, and the bike ride actually starts at 7:00 PM. I would also like to invite the public to the great reveal of the Pillars of Progress, that is the bridge, the underpass on Broadway Avenue coming into Moretown. There will be an event held on September 20th, 2025 at 10:00 AM. I can hold the other ones to our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
That will conclude that report.
Thank you so much, Madam President. That brings us, we do not have any zoning hearings for public hearing today, so we move to regular ordinances for public hearing where we have two items. The first is a public hearing for ordinance 6559 of 2025, an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorize the parish administrator or a designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto related to properties in District 3. And the next item is a public hearing for ordinance 6560 of 2025, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo relating to traffic schedules to establish a schedule for placement of traffic calming devices to include speed bumps and humps and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of ordinance number 6559 or ordinance number 6560? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay. That brings us to ordinances for final passage where we have the two items that just had a public hearing. The first is to consider adopting ordinance 6559 of 2025. That's the ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorize the parish administrator or a designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner John Paul Young, and is that second or is that backwards? It's been moved by Commissioner Ron Carthron and second by Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Carthron, would you like to speak on your motion?
We sort of tied. The motion is to englevo and adopt ordinance 6559 and also 6560 of 2025.
Second by the chair. Okay. Would you like to speak on that?
No, Madam President.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
And Commissioner Thomas is on his way to his seat right now. Thank you. And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent, and brings us to the next section on your agenda, which is going to be ordinances for introduction by title. Well, we have two items today. First is to introduce ordinance 6561 of 2025. That is an ordinance to deem property surplus and authorize the sale of surplus property owned by the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto. And the next item is to introduce ordinance 6548 of 2025. This is the second time this ordinance has been introduced, and it is an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Debt Service Fund and the Capital Outlay Fund to provide an appropriation of $10 million for the construction of a pickleball park and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Public hearing for these two items will be set for September 18th. That brings us now to Work Session Minutes where the first item to consider is adopting the Work Session Minutes of September 2nd, 2025 Work Session.
To the motion. Moved by Commissioner Victor Thomas, seconded by Commissioner John Paul Young, in the discussion relative...
To the motion. Seeing a hearing none, we'll vote on adoption of the Work Session Minutes.
All right, that motion carries with eight in support, none in opposition, and four absent, and brings us to resolutions to consider. We have one item today, which is to consider adopting Resolution 37 of 2025, a resolution to authorize the Cattle Parish Administrator to approve the assignment Bill of Sale and Conveyance of State Agency Leases Number 22291 and 22292 from Cypress Synergy Partners LLC to Apex Natural Gas LLC and otherwise providing with respect thereto. These items are in District 12.
Moved by Commissioner John Paul Young, seconded by Commissioner Atkins, in the discussion relative to the resolution. Seeing a hearing none, we're ready to vote, please.
And I believe everybody's votes are locked, and that is adopted with eight votes in support, none in opposition, and four absent. We have no old or new business to be considered at this time, so that brings us to Communicase and Committee Reports, second round.
Communicase, Committee Reports. Commissioner John Paul Young, anyone else? Commissioner Victor Thomas? Stay at home. Just see, Commissioner John Paul Young, Victor Thomas, anyone else? Okay, Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank my colleagues for their support of the speed bump schedule, speed bump and speed hump schedule change. It's, I believe, a necessary step to retaking control of some of our very smooth, drivable, or even raceable Cattle Parish streets, which have been taken over in many cases by racers. And I believe that the constituents who will benefit from these traffic calming devices will be extremely grateful for your support of their passage. And I also want to thank our administration for cooperating and working together to help restore public safety in this way. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I did want to say a special thank you to you guys for the warm birthday wishes. 38 has been a year. It's been a year of learning. I want to also wish a happy life anniversary, Commissioner Carthron, whose birthday is on the 6th. So, I just want to tell you, thank you guys for the wishes. Happy birthday, anniversary, all that to you too, Commissioner Carthron. Once again, thank you guys for making this such a great experience for 38. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner John Atkins, I understand you, understood you went to a rodeo the other day?
Yes, sir, I went to a rodeo in Ringgold, but it was really more the pre-rodeo, fish fry, and spiritual service. There was no actual rodeoing being done, but I was dressed appropriately just in case I was called upon.
You had your boots on.
They got this line dance with this song, "Boots on the Ground, Where Them Fans At."
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Wanted to know that you leave that off.
I would have been ready. Fortunately, I wasn't asked, but I would have been prepared. Thank you for your concern.
All right. And, okay, Commissioner Barrell?
I just wanted to follow up on comments that you made, Mr. Vice President, concerning the negative comments that sometimes our public make that sometimes drive tourism away from Shreveport. The game that we just recently had here was a good example. As I looked out there, I can only imagine if one, you know, the other segment of our community would have participated and what it would have looked like and how many more people we would have had in the stadium. It was a good game, it was historic schools, and we, in my opinion, have to learn to support each other, and sometimes that does not come out, and it sends the wrong signal to people who, especially if it's televised, and they look at that. Shreveport is a multicultural center, city, and multicultural tourism is the fastest-growing industry that we have if you look at a lot of the economic data, so we need to capitalize on that. And I don't think that we do that well enough, and a lot of times it's because we sent out, we sent out negative messages about our city, and Shreveport is a great city. At one time, I probably wouldn't have said that because when I first got here, it turned me off, and that's when I was in college, but as the law would have it, he planted me here, and I've been here ever since trying to make a difference. And hopefully, people will see that and appreciate that we have a lot of, a lot going for us, but we have to appreciate it first. So, again, I'm hoping that we realize that and try to do something about it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrell. You're absolutely right. Instead of talking negative, you know, pull off your gloves and join in and do what you can to make it better, and you can see a change. Seeing no others, and I'd like to close with, thank God, college football is back, and the Dallas Cowboys and Philadelphia Eagles tonight. Go Saints! Okay, next order of business, please.
That brings us to citizens' comments later rivals. We have not received any requests at this time.
Move. Go watch the Cowboys.